So when I come in, it's three dollars an hour.
Good afternoon, we'll call the meeting to order, we'll begin with our road call, please. President.
President. President.
President.
Here.
Here. I recognize that we do have a quorum, so the meeting will proceed, notice of this meeting was properly posted as required on July the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. We will begin, of course, with our pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Holman, I'm, you have one meeting of veteranship under your belt here, I'm gonna ask you to lead our pledge today. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. We will next move to citizen participation, as a reminder, all speakers are granted three minutes for their comments. I have had three forms submitted today, I will start those in the order in which they were received, so, Mr. Johnson, Johnston, we begin with you.
Good afternoon, almost said good morning, sorry guys, turned this around, alright, so how's everybody doing today? So, we had another death, if you guys didn't know. Right after the stern talking that we're gonna be doing something, we had another death. And, um, I also wanna let you guys know that, uh, I'm a little concerned about this mysterious list of supposed justice doers. I find it a bit unethical and possibly illegal that we're withholding names for possible people who are gonna be funding public operations. I'm having legal counsel look into that, and I will proceed as necessary, that just doesn't sit right with me, we're talking about public entity, and we're saying, we're not gonna move forward, we're not gonna do anything, we're gonna stay the course, because some mythical fairies in the distance are doing something, it, it, it sounds hypocritical, to say the least. So, I've already filed a record request, I will get those names, because I think the public need to know this, this is after all paid for by the taxpayers. We are supposedly a country of the people, and, uh, the people have been speaking for a while about what we should be doing. So, uh, just wanna let you guys know that, that, uh, same old, same old, let me tell the public this real quick, I really don't think they're gonna dissolve themselves, uh, power doesn't concede power, you usually have to rip it out of their fingers. Typically, one of the things I've learned in politics is that most people involved in it are cowards, uh, they're looking for positions of power, money. I mean, these guys are protecting this thing like this is the best paying job that they've ever had, and supposedly they're not making any money off of it. So, um, I question the morality, the ethical behavior, and also I question the legality of this. And I know that you said this, I like you, I do, I really do, uh, but I do think it's hypocritical. And I'll say that to my best friend, if you're, if you do something hypocritical, say something hypocritical, you're a hypocrite. And when you say that this is for the people, I'm gonna do the right thing, but yet you are going to withhold names, and then you're going to say that I'm gonna make a political decision by caring about somebody else's political campaign, I love you dude, I really do. But what's right is what's right, that simple, lives are at stake, who gives a good goddamn about somebody's job? Lives are more important. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Stanton.
Geez, me, Ms. Stanton gets a little nervous sometime, um, yes, I did hear that you were going to have some moneyed people come in and to help you out with the situation, and that's great, and maybe you can, um, declare war on drugs in that jail. Maybe they can help you to fund these people with what they need in order to prevent the deaths, um, a drug dog of their own. Trace wands, look it up, the prisons use them, they'll detect molecules of drugs on a person, even if they're carrying it in their body, you can check out the vendors that are coming in the back of that jail. Use those wands and those drugs on those trucks, commissary, declare war on it. You know, you got the money, let's stop the deaths, you stop the deaths, you won't be seeing us up here, I just finished talking to him. Five lines, my son's death investigation was five lines, that's all it consisted of, that's all he was worth. He was in that cell by himself, you cannot tell me someone in that facility didn't give it to him, so if you got the money, do what's right and fix it.
And our final speaker is Mr. Falk.
So another month and another death, eight this year, and I'm gonna start by reading their names, because I think this is important. Vincent Burke, age forty-two, died on January eighth, three months or three days after his birthday, one day after he was booked. Vincent Riggi, age thirty-seven, died on January eighth, Michelle Young, age twenty-eight, died on March seventeenth. Another inmate was charged with murder for supplying the drugs, but I guess the question is, where did that inmate get the drugs? Casey Ball, age thirty-eight, died April nine, or April nineteenth, Clinton Pike, age forty, died April twenty-fifth. Rachel Nally, age thirty-five, died April twenty-sixth, she was arrested on April twenty-first for missing a court hearing for misdemeanor charges. That's three deaths in seven days during that time period. Mario Mason, age twenty-eight, died May tw- uh, twelfth, he was the only one of these eight who was actually convicted of a crime, the rest of them were innocent by law. Everett Edwards, age fifty-eight, died July third, he was arrested on June twenty-seventh for attempted robbery, he was missing one leg and was in a wheelchair. So, uh, Pastor Scobie, I know you said that you don't wanna hand the jail over to watch a, you know, honorable, good black man fail at running to jail, but this is what happened. Shortly after those statements were made, a black man died in that jail, and a black CEO is running that jail, and we've had five deaths since he's taken over. Th- this is not a commentary on CEO Timmons, he's in a situation that I would not wanna be in. But the truth is this, we have to acknowledge that this is a failure, it is not getting better, it's getting worse, it's getting worse. You have a two-hundred-and-sixty million dollars in a bond issue sitting there, or at least most of it's sitting there, you're saying that because you're short on funds, people are dying in the jail, well then use some of the money you have to fix the jail, fix the jail first. Lower the population, and then as we've said a hundred times, come talk to us about building a smaller jail. I'm gonna read the lyrics to a very short song, this is in reference to what Chris just said, it's called, What Are Their Names? I wonder who they are, the men who really run this land, and I wonder why they run it with such a thoughtless hand. What are their names, and on what streets do they live, I'd like to ride right over this afternoon and give them a piece of my mind about peaceful mankind. Peace is not an awful lot to ask, and we will not have peace until the people in that jail are safe.
Thank you. That concludes public comment, at this point, we will move into our first action item, which is review and approval, and any discussion from our minutes from our special meeting of June twenty-seventh. What is the pleasure of the trust? There's been a motion for approval, there has been a second, any discussion, absent discussion, if the clerk would please call the roll, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
By vote of six oh, the agenda item passes, at this point, we are ready for agenda item number two, which is a, a receipt and possible acceptance and discussion of report by interim CEO Paul Timmons.
Good afternoon. Just a few things to cover today, not a lot has changed since the last time I was here, um, we graduated in the academy on June twenty-seventh. After eight weeks of training in that academy, I think we had eleven to graduate. Some of the subjects that were covered were crisis intervention, defense, defensive tactics, and custody and control. We continue to mine the partnerships that I've talked about before, uh, Indian Meridian Botec, the Oklahoma City Police Department, the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, Francis Tuttle, and Langston University. My contact with Langston has been out of town, out of state, the past several weeks, so we haven't talked much lately, and we will be, I'll, I'll be reaching out with her, to her, probably la- later on this week to find out where her schedule is like, and with the school year getting ready to kick off, and probably a month or so, less than a month or so, um, talk about what that partnership's gonna look like going forward. I'm gonna have, uh, Chief Smith come up and talk about the Criminal Investigations Division.
Afternoon. Skip over some things here. Okay, as was brought up, July third, we did have an inmate die, Everett Edwards, can't comment on that, still under investigation. However, in the reference to Michelle Young's death, which was three sixteen and twenty-five, we were able to track down Maureen Martinez, who gave her drugs, which ultimately caused her to overdose and die, we have a full confession from Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez also gave a full confession to bringing in a substantial amount of drugs a few months ago, which resulted in several overdoses on the sixth floor where she was housed. Following her arrest, it was discovered that she once again attempted to smuggle some narcotics in the facility, she was taken out, uh, to the hospital, they were removed there. Uh, some statistics for this, uh, Criminal Investigations Division, the last month, they filed fifteen charges, closed seven contraband cases, seventeen new cases have been opened, three arrest warrants have been issued. Uh, last time we met, Mr. Buck, you asked for some information on the xylazine mixed with fentanyl, I've got some information for you here, it's referred to as trank. So the xylazine is not a scheduled narcotic, it's meant for animals. So, it has not been given a classification as far as narcotics go. Uh, they're mixing it to increase the sedative effect, and the problem with it is, is that there's no going back from it, once you take it and you start overdosing, there's nothing to negate that overdose that we know of yet, and that causes a big problem. The challenges for the jails, it's gonna be the same that we have with fentanyl, it's such, such a small amount can be snuck in in so many different ways, and it's so potent, especially when mixed with fentanyl, that we're having huge issues with it. I don't think we've seen any of it yet here, uh, hopefully we don't. Um, working with Donna, the HOA, to see what kinda options we have in the medical realm as far as combating the xylazine, but as far as we're finding, there's nothing to combat the xylazine overdose.
Quick clarification, if I might, you say we haven't seen it here, is that to suggest as far as contraband inside the jail, or is that speaking to the state of Oklahoma?
Contraband inside the jail.
Real quick question there too. It, what form, you said it was in multiple forms, what, is it, this is showing liquid, I think.
Right, so the way they're mixing it with fentanyl, it's typically gonna be a powder form.
And is that avail, is, is this is a veterinary medication generally?
It's a force tranquilizer essentially.
Okay, in, in both forms, powder and?
Correct. That's all I have for CID. Alright, I'm gonna give it to.
Another question?
One of the speakers talked about a wand that can detect drugs, are you familiar with that? So, a wand that detects drugs, no, um, there are some devices that will tell you the chemical makeup of certain things to give you.
On the, on the machine, and it tells you what it is, I'm talking about something that you can point or test somebody with, and that says, this is what this person's carrying, especially when the speaker's inside of them, when they try to digest whatever, so I just wasn't familiar with that.
I, I'm not familiar with any of that technology.
Well, I think you might wanna ask her.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, be, have that prepared, so, okay, thank you.
Pastor, did you have a question?
I just, I, I will defer to the expert here, who I feel like certainly knows, and I'm looking it up and I'm seeing it. So Sheriff, could you speak into that about drug wands, because I'm seeing that they're out there.
So as far as drug ones, a lot of that stuff is used inside of facilities, when you talk about inside of spaces, when we're out in our space, typically in a community, we're utilizing dogs and things of that nature, open air sniffs, things that will allow our deputies to be able to get inside of cars legally, so, um, the product is there, but as far as usage, just different, um, different situations.
But, but Sheriff, you are familiar with usage inside facilities?
I'm aware that some things do exist, yes, now, how well they work, no, I haven't seen them live used, I haven't seen the demonstration, no.
Mr. Couch?
Sir.
Pastor Scobie.
Have a seat, Mr. Couch. So, have we moved from the, the director's report?
No, it is still, it's still in the director's report, he is yielding to, uh, some of his deputies, and I assume he will wrap up at the conclusion.
Present monthly report like we always do, okay.
Okay.
This will be a technology and infrastructure update. We continue to collect anonymous data from the health radars to, uh, refine that algorithm. We have received thirty-seven new radar units, we do have an installation plan, we have a tentative start date of August fifteenth. Those installs will be done on the thirteenth floor. A maintenance update, we do have, we are up to twelve doors that we've added extra visibility to. Due to the age of the equipment at that facility, we've had to replace three gate openers. That's completed. Our HVAC upgrade is ninety percent complete, the remaining items on that punch list are test and balance the last two pods on the fourth floor. And to install override valves to prevent core, uh, core failures on our air conditioning system, that'll be done in September. We are installing a new camera on the roof of the facility, it's a PTZ camera, pan tilt zoom, to better protect our parking areas where our employees and also the maintenance area loading dock is. We've, uh, optimized our camera network from one gig to ten gig, basically because it was causing lag on our network, that's complete, we did that in-house. We, we, we are refining a web form for medical acceptance to reduce our medical liability in the facility. And we are creating an in-house program designed for finance requests to address fiscal accountability. Any questions on that portion?
Trustee Griffin?
Yeah, be more specific, when you say you're designing a web form for medical.
Okay. All, it's gonna automate tasks, if a person answers a particular question where we need to drill down into, it will prompt the questioner to go there and get more medical information so that we can make the best decisions.
What system's that running on?
It, it's gonna be internal, it will be on our, uh, secured network, so, it will not, it's not a third-party piece of software, we're developing that in-house with our employees.
Okay, and will it link to the medical record that's established?
Yes.
Mr. Couch, one additional clarification on that, and so, when you say where we will make the decision, this is our screen tool, whether or not somebody is appropriate for, uh, detainment, correct?
That is correct, it's pre-screening.
And, and so depending upon what this screen product would look like, it might determine, uh, whether we require medical clearance external of the organization?
It would be prior to us accepting the person into our facility, yes, it's a fit for incarceration.
Are we, are we allowed to share, are, are we allowed to share the results of that screen with the medical, um, center, which we are making the out of, or the referral to?
That would be a, a question for our counsel, as far as I know.
I, I would be interested in exploring whether or not we can share that in order to, um, expedite their ability to engage with the individual.
I'll get an answer on it for you. Thank you.
Now back to you, Director, I believe, alright.
Briefly, uh, talking about the medical division and some of the progress that they've made, we, we are, um, beginning to advertise for various positions within the medical division, um, some of the positions we, we fill. Probably, there's a couple of things that I wanted to speak to specifically. We're still in the, still in the process of reviewing off-site medical bills, and, uh, in the process of changing, changing the pharmacist to a local vendor. Um, and we continue to work with the kitchen to refine and improve medical diets. Hopefully, one, once we get a registered dietitian on board, we'll continue to update that process. Just talked about, uh, our intake process. Of those that, um, participate in that intake process, let's, probably a little less than half participate in the questions that, that are asked of them, and that's the breakdown of what we come up with, nine percent, nineteen percent admit alcohol use, nineteen percent have some, some type of mental health, uh, issue, uh, sixteen under the influence of narcotics or alcohol. We have a, uh, three, thirty-two percent homeless population, a five percent veteran, and, uh, nine percent admit to opioid, opioid use. Just an update on the programs, I talked about, um, our GED. I talked about our GED program. We're still looking to get that started next month. We have two individuals identified from Occupational Industrial Relations Center, along with the Urban League that will be attending training this week, in fact, to allow them to be able to do what they need to do with the GED program. I think our tablets are on point or up to date as far as getting that program loaded so that we'll be able to start it on time. I know that we've had a, a huge interest from our population. They've inquired as to when we're gonna get it started. So, we're trying to make sure that we get all the bases covered before we kick it off. So that when we get started, we don't anticipate any hiccups with it.
And Director Timmons, I'll remind you, into the microphone, please.
Sorry.
I appreciate you.
Total head count for this month, sixteen thirty-three. That kind of identifies the race breakdown. Top charges, murder, manslaughter. We have fifteen hundred and eleven there on criminal felony charges, another nine hundred and seventeen on misdemeanor charges. Off to the right of the pie chart there identifies the breakup of the charges that are being held, the people that are being held there within the facility. Booking and releasing, today, we booked in twenty-two thousand, just a little over twenty-two thousand. And we have released just over twenty-one thousand. So that there's not much variance between the people that are being booked in and released. Not sure why that is, why it is, why the numbers are trending upward, it seems, for the last couple of months at least. Arresting agencies, of course, Oklahoma City by far, Sheriff's Office next, Edmond Highway Patrol, Indale City Police Department. The breakdown of women versus men that are arrested by each agency. This talks about the average length of stay. We book in approximately fifty-eight, just over fifty-eight a day. The average length of stay is just a little over six days before they get released. Recidivism. About seventy-six percent of the people that are booked in have been there before. Seventy-four percent of males, sixty-seven percent of females. Special housing classification. The trend stays pretty much the same with mental health and protected custody. That concludes this part of the report. Any questions to this?
In your medical vision progress report, you said mental health openings, mental health counselors, I assume that's plural. So, how many positions do you have and how many vacancies?
Do you have enough?
Donna, if you would come to the microphone, please.
So traditionally, I should have six mental health counselors. I should have two people that are eligible or able to prescribe medications currently. I have one DMBA doctorate. And then if we open our MAT MOUD pod where the doors have been made so you can see end of the cell, then that's gonna be a whole nother staff, staffing concern because we need more staff for programming and resource management and discharge plan.
Okay, so, but how many vacancies do you, I'm sorry, you probably said it, I missed it. But how many vacancies are you down on as far as the mental health counselors?
Uh, let's see, two.
Two.
I should have six.
Okay. Would it be possible to have interns from some of our colleges, universities?
I don't know what the state requires.
Okay. It might be worth, I mean, it's nice to have free labor, so, so, they were helpful to me, so anyways, okay, thank you.
Pastor, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, Chairman Buck. Couple of things. One, our investigator made mention of death that took place July third. And I think the follow-up was, the investigation is still pending. So, we can't speak on that, something along those lines. So, moving forward, I want to make sure that we give the respect to the deceased as well as the family members to communicate the press release at every one of these meetings of any deceased person. It's disrespectful to walk past it like it did not exist. And for the last two years, something goes all over me every time we brush past it. Now, I've understood the legal ramifications of why. And then all of a sudden, because I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, it hit me like a ton of bricks. To read the press release, they deserve that. So, since it wasn't read today, but I do expect for it to be read in the future, I pray we have no more deaths. But I'm gonna read it today. And that is, at the top left, it says Paul Timmons, interim chief executive. To the right, Steve Buck, chairman, OCCJA, Oklahoma County Detention Center inmate death reported. Oklahoma City, July third, two thousand twenty-five. The Oklahoma County Detention Center Criminal Investigation Division. CID is actively investigating an inmate death that took, that occurred Thursday afternoon. At approximately three fifty PM, a detention officer and medical staff were performing medical checks in a pod when they discovered the inmate was unresponsive in his cell. Life-saving measures were immediate, immediately initiated by medical staff. IMSA personnel and Oklahoma City Fire Department personnel responded and continued life-saving measures. IMSA transported the inmate to the hospital. Despite these efforts, the inmate identified as Everett Edwards. Born May eleventh, nineteen sixty-seven, was pronounced deceased by medical staff at the hospital at four forty-eight PM. Edwards had been in custody at the Detention Center since June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Held on a hundred and ten thousand dollar bond for charge of robbery, or attempted robbery with a dangerous weapon. Prior to his arrest, he had been out on bond for two separate charges of carrying or possessing a firearm after a previous conviction and those bonds were subsequently revoked, returning him to custody. The circumstances surrounding his death are under investigation. All deaths are investigated as homicides until a final determination is made by the state medical examiner's office. His family has been notified, media contact, and I won't waste the time reading the rest of that. But you, you see how, I mean, it takes three minutes, four, and it just means something. It really does. So, let's, let's, let's grant that, that respect to the deceased in the future. Pray it won't be, and the family members as a whole. That's one. But then it sounds like we're wrapping this report up. So, how can we? And this, you know, my, my communication is, is not combative. I just, it's just, it's just frustrating sometimes when we, we share what we share, we give reports, but we, we don't touch on some things that are critical from previous meetings. And one is, I don't know how any of us could sit here, stand there, sit there, and not make mention of the huge catastrophic blunder that was made subsequent to the last meeting, saying that the Oklahoma County Detention Center issues a urgent warning of budget shortfall threatening jail operations in August. Basically saying, we're out of money come August first, in essence. And we not stand, sit, and apologize to the constituents of Oklahoma County for making that alarming, which we've all come to find out because we say that we trust Butch Freeman's mind than we do most of ours as it relates to things like this. And I do. And he, he called it Bullwinkle. And we're just sitting here like it didn't happen.
Pastor, if I might, in terms of timing, I believe that the director is prepared to talk that through during the financial report. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so we have a very specific action item to work through what was reported last month. If you would indulge us to wait until that item.
Okay, um, okay, the last thing that I want to say is, I, I wanna speak to our chairman and just, I wanna ask you a question, and that is, in order to dissolve the Oklahoma County Jail Trust, a motion has to be made, has been on the agenda, a motion has to be made, it has to be seconded. And then every jail trust member must vote yes to dissolve. And then it goes up to the Oklahoma County Commissioners and it has to be a majority vote. Is that correct?
That is congruent with my understanding.
So, we have no way to dissolve this jail trust at all unless every single person agrees with that and even the ones that are not present.
It is my understanding, and I would yield to counsel for a correction of me if I mistake this. That is correct. It requires a unanimous vote. If there were, say, for example, six trustees present in a meeting and that meeting was, that vote was attempted to be taken, we would have to revisit that vote to reach the magic number of nine. Did I get that correct?
That's what I thought.
Any other questions of the Director? Seeing no further questions, what is the will of the trust relative to his report? Motion to receive the report. There's been a motion to receive. Is there a second to that motion? It's been properly, we're still waiting on the second. Did you do, wait a second? Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded for receipt of the report. Seeing no further questions or debate, if you would, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of six zero, that item passes. Our next item on the agenda is the receipt of impossible acceptance and discussion of a chief financial officer's report, including an income statements, financial reports, and current budget. As I indicated, Pastor Scobie, it's my expectation that the item you were raising will be addressed in the upcoming few minutes. As a lead into that, I want to publicly acknowledge the work of our new trustee, Mr. Holman. Mr. Holman has spent significant time over the last week with the finance team at the Detention Center, working through and using his business acumen to explore the processes used. So, thank you for that, Mr. Holman. I appreciate your time and effort there. And Paul, I believe you're gonna give aspects of the report today, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Would you prefer, as you go through this, to take questions as you wade through the report? Or do you prefer for questions to be held to the end?
To the end.
Are my fellow trustees okay with that approach? Thank you.
Before we, before we review the numbers, it's important to understand the broader context. I'm here to talk about the critical budget, budget issues facing our jail and to provide context on how we've reached this point. This isn't just about numbers, it's about safety, operations, and the people. While I'm not an economist, I have attended several budget discussions and observed consistent patterns. Let me walk you through where we stand. Over the past three years, many departments have received increased allocations to addressing, to address rising costs. Our department, our department has received a flat funding unchanged despite inflation and increased demands. The result? A measurable loss of purchasing power estimated at approximately five point six million. The same amount now sitting in reserve under a watch list. This discrepancy raises concerns about equity, sustainability, and operational readiness. These slides illustrate our, our, our budget. Thirty-three point seven million, five point one in special revenues. Special revenues, I mean, funds that we received in commissary, jail phone calls, our boarding contracts with Oklahoma City and other municipal agencies within Oklahoma County, and DOC contracts. Our projected budget of FY twenty-six is thirty-eight point eight million with a monthly of three point, just over three point two million. Our projected expenses for the FY twenty-six come out to forty-four point six million dollars. Roughly three million, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. A shortfall of each month of four hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. Again, for FY twenty-six, we predict that our expenses to be forty-four point six million dollars with a monthly allocation of three point seven million dollars, just over three point seven million dollars, which leaves us short by four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, just over four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. How did we get there? We got a one-time payment from Oklahoma City of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was less than half what they paid for last year. Our outside medical costs, three point one million dollars. These are people that we have to send to a medical facility for treatment. We don't have any choice when it comes to those costs. We had, we had to pay that. We have five point eight million dollars on watch list. Apparently, the BET agrees with that, that there's a deficit, since they placed this five point eight million dollars on watch list. This is our revenue, FY twenty-four, twenty-five, FY twenty-five, twenty-six. The numbers are the same. Zero for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. Zero budget increases. Talks about inflation. This is kind of an example of what the loss of buying power looks like. When prices go up and your budget stays the same, your dollars don't stretch as far. This is called the loss of buying power, a basic economic principle that happens when inflation rises, but, but, but funding does not. For example, if your budget stays flat for three years while inflation grows by fifteen percent, it's like getting a fifteen percent budget cut without anyone ever saying the words. You still have the same number of dollars, they just don't buy what they used to. These are our expected revenues versus actual revenues. You'll see that the jail phone contract is down. The ARPA reimbursements are down. And we don't know where we stand with Oklahoma City at this time. We've not been able to get together with them to talk about the contract for this year. So, at this point, that's, that is- So at this point, that's, that is still an unknown. Our budget expenses for twenty-five versus the twenty-six expenses, those are the numbers. Just over forty million for twenty-four, twenty-five, and we project forty-four, just over forty-four million for twenty-five, twenty-six. A budget gap of just over three million dollars. I'll say the, this to you, running this jail is, is difficult due to severe budget shortfalls. Staffing is dismal, staff is overworked and exhausted. The budget has been flat for the last three years despite rising inflation. We've lost fifteen percent of our purchasing power, equivalent to six million dollars. The situation is critical. Running the jail is extremely difficult under current budget conditions. Our staffing levels are dangerously low. Our team is exhausted mentally and physically. For three years, our budget has been flat. Meanwhile, inflation has steadily eroded our buying power. We are now operating with fifteen percent less value in our dollars, which is about six million in real terms. Thank you.
Before I open to questions from my fellow trustees, Mr. Holman, do you have anything to, to supplement that? I know you spent at least two lengthy meetings, uh, working with the team.
I can say this, and, and in my hesitation to say a lot because I'm still so low on the learning curve. But as I've looked at these numbers and seen, uh, what puts them, what has put these packages together, I certainly concur that the shortage is there. Are there areas that we might do better with expenses? Perhaps there are some contracts that either need to be negotiated from the get-go, or they need to be renegotiated. And that could, that could help with the, on the expense side of the equation. But today, I think the report that has been given is pretty realistic. Let me rephrase that. Is realistic. I'll take out the, the indefinite.
And now, um, Director, are you ready to take questions from members of the trust?
Yes.
All right. Pastor Scobie, I'll start with you. I kind of, um, segued you over from that previous item, or do you want a second to recollect?
No, I was gonna let everybody else speak, but no, I'll, um, okay, is that the report? I guess that's my question. Is that, is that the report?
That, that's, that's the report on the budget. I understand we'll be doing our financial statements following the budget conversation.
Financial statements, is that when an apology is going to be issued?
I, I will yield to the director as to when he's going to have that conversation.
I can speak to you later about that, if you like.
Well, no, I, th- this, this one has to be public because it was done in public. Um, he- here's, I agree with everything that you just, you just communicated. Um, with, with my colleague, um, uh, Mr. Holman, I agree with all of it. The, the only slight disagreement would be, I believe we need more money. We, we need more. But here, this is what I was referring to. This press release from June twenty-seven, I'm not gonna do y'all like I did you a minute ago. I want to. I want to read every line, but, but I, I won't do it. Um, this one, in essence, says, here's, here it is. "Without new funding, our emergency support, the authority projects available operating funds will be depleted following July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five." And then it says, "There's a five point eight million dollar funding gap," but it is written as to, for most people, like me, who would need to read it as a, maybe a fifth grader or kindergarten, that it's a five point eight million dollar funding gap now, like not as going to be next year. But for sure, "Without new funding, our emergency support depleted by July thirty-first." This is what we put out. We, we put this out. And it was inaccurate, and it undermines, we need more money. Not we as in me, but, well, I, I could take some, not from here, but I do need a little bit. Um, but here it is. We, we as a trust, we do need more money to operate the Oklahoma County Detention Center, and I believe I've shouted that from the mountaintop for probably more than anyone. But it undermines our credibility. Y'all don't, don't be angry at me. I'm trying to help us. It undermines our credibility when we do try to get some more money from somewhere, when we put out reports like this that were not well thought through. And, and and Director Timmons, this is not directed towards you. This is just overall. I'll, I'll shoot the bullet our way too. This is absolutely ridiculous that we allow for this to go out. It makes us look like buffoons, idiots. And again, I'm not saying you, all of us. This is, this is not right, and for us to sit here and stand here and then no one say, uh, I'm sorry, this was not right, and we should have done this differently. I still have not heard that. And it's not, it's not an apology to me. It's an apology to the residents of Oklahoma County. Do we not understand that there are some senior citizens in this county? There are some younger people who don't quite have a, a really good grasp on how things work, and they look at something like this and think, oh my God, everybody's going to be released from the Oklahoma County Detention. You think that that's ridic- you think that's extreme, don't you? There are people who think like that. They're not going to have any money, so therefore, they, everybody's going to be released. If it's not but one person that thinks that based upon that, that's one too many. We gotta do a better job. And then nobody said, well, let me say to the Oklahoma County residents, I am sorry that we put out a press release stating that without emergency, our new funding, then our funds will be deleted following July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and then there, and then the dot, dot, dot. I apologize that you thought the dot, dot, dot could have been, we're done. We're going to close it. So I apologize that we, and I saw it, and I didn't speak on it, and I should have.
So Pastor Scobie, might I ask you a follow-up? Were you okay with taking a question from me? So I, I think what I am hearing you saying, to which I would agree, is the way should, this should have been framed is, uh, we anticipate a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar monthly shortfall, which if unaddressed, would lead to an end of the year, five point eight million dollar deficit. Would that have been a more accurate portrayal?
The end of the year, end of the
End, end of, end of the fiscal year. I'm sorry, not calendar. Yes, sir. End of the fiscal year.
Yes, Chairman Buck, yes, but this one sentence is an absolute lie. "Without new funding, our emergency support, the authority projects." How would you project that? Available operating funds will be depleted following Ju- July thirty- There's no way on God's green earth we wouldn't have any money July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
I, I will join you in your apology. Because I concur that that would paint a picture of effect of a certain date. We would be five point eight million dollars in the hole. I join you. Any other questions relative to the budget presentation? Again, we will be having a follow-up on the, um, general financial accounting statements and see will you be leading that? But, let me ask further questions for
Your, uh, outside medical cost, is that due to the medical situation we're in now with not having a, uh, medical provider and having to handle it in-house, taking things that maybe fall out of scope to outside facility? Is that what led to that increase?
Partly, I would, I would say, um, some of the things that occur within the facility, we are just not equipped to handle, depending on the severity of it. Um, when it comes to, like, the incident that Chief Smith spoke about a few minutes ago, uh, when we have instances like that, we have to send them out. We don't have a choice when it comes to that. And again, depending on the seriousness of the injury, that is what dictates the level of care they receive.
And more so, uh, just asking the question to see, like, if you have, if you're, you know, raising your cost three point one to take them out to a, an outside facility, would it be worth, you know, taking what we have now invested in the current model and including that money in there to potentially be able to handle things in-house with a provider? Just, um,
We have a doctor on board right now. Part of that problem, though, is, is staff, medical staff, and the ability to hire people in a, a competitive way.
And, and Sheriff, I, from, from my organizational experience running a system, um, so this is not related in my volunteer role in my previous, one of the challenges we have is, for example, I know that we currently have multiple individuals who are on dialysis. It, it takes a, a critical mass number in order to in-house your dialysis services. It, it's a matter of, of economics. Um, dialysis expensive, uh, dialysis treatment is very, very expensive. So at some level, um, medical expenses is driven by the general healthcare status of those people who are detained. And if you go through periods of time where there is a, a very extensive health condition that is co-occurring with the, um, arrest which brought them into our care, um, it becomes, it, it, it true, I would love to be able to say we can in-house any things, but as somebody who's run a health system, there are some things you just don't reach critical mass.
Another follow-up there. I know that whenever I joined the trust, we were having a, um, challenge tracking down the actual costs of outside medical care. Do you feel confident that we now have a pretty good handle on that this is an accurate number?
I feel pretty confident with that number. Um, there's some things in place before I stepped into the role that we've had a chance to go back and revisit, and there's a contract that we're looking at probably going to terminate and try to do that part of the billing in-house.
Follow-up questions relative to this part? Trustee Johnson?
Lieutenant, you said that you're not be able to hire medical staff? And can you go over that again, please? It's, uh, because of what we're offering salary-wise is not
That's part of it. And then just, just the challenge of, uh, people wanting to come to work at the detention center, that's another part of it. Um, and then just paying a competitive wage, wage.
Okay, so are you locked into a certain amount, or do you have some flexibility?
We have a little bit of flexibility, but it's not a lot.
Now, I understand this because I had a difficult time at a facility competing as a nurses classified, so we made them all unclassifieds that we get paid. It's hard to compete when you see billboards saying, uh, ten thousand dollar sign-on bonus. So we had to change that, and they were like the third highest paid employees at the facility. So I'm not saying you have a little bit of leeway or quite a bit or whatever. I mean, I don't know.
We have a little bit. Um, our medical staff, most of those positions are the highest paid within the facility. So we have a little bit. It just depends. You know, and I, I have expressed this once before. Um, I know there's a need for medical staff. I also know there is a need for detention staff. And trying to weigh or balance that need between those two needs and hire, um, those positions that are really critical, knowing that it takes away from the number of detention staff that I'm able to hire. But, you know, I would rather pay for the, uh, medical staff so that we can provide that level of care that we need to. And hopefully, our budget situation will be, become better as we move down the road so that will allow us the opportunity to hire that detention staff. But also, um, there are several challenges with that as well, and part of that is salary.
I believe trustee Griffin has asked to get back into queue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, which asks, this is a follow-up. I think I ask this every meeting. Um, I know that our medical, um, staff has prepared a document that has our optimal staffing level. Do we also have a budget that has been developed for optimal staffing for all positions within the facility? Um, as opposed to the traditional budget of, here's what we got, here's we're going to spend. What would it cost to run the facility optimally staffed?
You guys have those done? It's great. Okay. I know we're working on them. We're trying to get them ready, so.
Um, I would, with that said, I think it's important that that be part of your public report at the next trust meeting. Okay, are we ready to yield to C for the standard financials?
Okay, C. Due to incomplete, uh, report that, um, so the June statement is not available because, um, for the Oklahoma County, the last ten days of the fiscal year, that was on a different pay period. And, uh, the county doesn't wrap their payroll until the, after the twentieth of July. So because of that reason, I don't have the actual number of the last ten days, so we are incomplete uh, numbers for expenses, so that's why I cannot do an income statement. And, uh, the report will be ready for the next, at the next meeting.
So at the next meeting, we will both review end of year or so fiscal year twenty-five closeout. And then we'll review actual for January or for July, uh, year one of twenty-six fiscal.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, are, are you in a position today? I know that finance, um, I should yield to colleagues for questions first. I'm sorry. I broke decorum.
Um, I, I understand. I don't know why that could have not been communicated really in the beginning. Um, and what we talked about today, the mo- the thing we've talked about the most is the finances. And now we don't have a report. Could we have had a? I don't know. Maybe I need to yield to, um, trustee Holman on, on this question, and that is, could we have had, I don't know, we could, but an incomplete report without that staffing call? I don't, I don't know. Just, just
So, um, i- if, if I might, uh, first of all, uh, C had mentioned the, the twentieth to me, so I will take ownership, Pastor, for not fully framing that out. So that is on me. I think the operational lesson for, um, next year is, uh, we should be able to anticipate this as a trust, and we should probably have our July trust meeting scheduled at such a time that we can receive full financials. Um, I believe that's in the appropriate diligence. Okay. So, but C, um, I do have a question for you. You were seeking the advice of council.
I have a question before I say something.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a thirty-second, thirty-second pause for you. I- is this an easy one, or is this one complex, Rod? I'm sorry?
I'm good.
Yeah, are you good?
Yeah.
So, um, knowing, and again, with apologies to Pastor Scobie, I think your point is very well made, extremely well made. Um, but in fairness to C, C had explained to me a couple of weeks ago, the, um, the later than, than traditional pay cycle, um, how that books. So I will take ownership for this one, Pastor, and I will own this particular one. So my question for you, C, is, um, when you, when we close out the twenty-five fiscal year, so I'm talking July one, twenty-five through June thirty, twenty-five, understanding that we had some extraordinary items coming up, seven hundred and fifty thousand from Oklahoma City Police that was prior year monies, but since we don't do receivables, it shows up as a cash receipt. Do you anticipate that we will end the year on the positive or the negative?
Positive.
So we will close the year at a net positive? Okay. Any follow-ups? I would just, um, doubling down on the conversation that you had, Director, in understanding there were some extraordinary items. I am anticipating that when we give the financial report next month, for the close of fiscal year twenty-five, we should explain why we ended the year net positive, which is my guess is going to be, um, incomplete staffing, and there are going to be some other areas where we were not fully, um, expending And there are going to be some other areas where we were not fully, um, expending that would allow us to be in a positive situation. So I would expect that to be communicated with clarity as part of our meeting. Okay, we have no items to accept, um, at this point. So unless there's a strong, uh, desire for a motion, I am going to, um, move beyond this item. Pastor Scobie?
Vice Chair, you, you had asked a question. It sounded to be it was the optimal staffing cost, something along those lines, and they didn't have it. So the, the, who, who was it? Was it Couch? Couch said that he, he has it. He said he has it, but he doesn't have it here. And the director said, I know that we're working on it. Y'all, we have to do better. These people are listening to what we say. So I'm just deciding today to pull out several things and to point them out, but they listen. So they listen to someone saying, we have it. I don't have it with me. And then they listen to someone say, well, we're working on it. Two different things.
Thank you. So unless there's no objection, we will move to agenda item number four. Thank you, C. Agenda item number four is an approval of invoices and claims for June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, that list has been provided to you. What is the action of, what is the, um, desire of the trust?
New approval.
It's been a motion of approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll vote on agenda item number four. I see we do have a motion. I believe that is by trustee Griffin, the second by Mr. Holman. At this point, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. By a vote of six zero, the item passes. Agenda item number five, you will recognize that this is a new agenda item. I appreciate Rod working on me with this request. It is to receive and accept and discuss reports or comments by the trust chairman or vice chairman regarding operation improvements. And then you can see the list moving forward. Um, I requested this be on here, uh, for the purpose as we move forward for, uh, myself, as long as I serve as chair, or, um, trustee Griffin, as long as she serves as vice chair, uh, just to have an opportunity for some input. The input I would offer today, uh, very specifically is, um, A, I talked last time and the board made a motion regarding a, uh, performance evaluation on ourselves. Um, my own personal plea is I did not do a good job of watching the calendar and didn't realize there were two weeks between that meeting and this meeting. One of those being a holiday week and the other me being out of town for the majority of the week. And so I will take, um, accountability for the fact I don't have anything of substance to report in this meeting other than, um, my commitment to doing a process that is fair, transparent, and exhaustive, uh, remains in place. And I will keep you updated. And you should anticipate that there would be action on that item, um, at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number two, uh, next regularly scheduled meeting, you might recall that I publicly discussed at the last trust meeting that I had a couple of work conflicts that were on the calendar. Those trust meetings have now been rescheduled. So you see two cancellations on the clerk's document. And then you see two special meetings that have been scheduled and they're still. Uh, so I apologize for anybody who's inconvenienced by that, uh, but because of the importance of the matters in force, I thought it important to do that in advance. So if you're watching at home, please make sure you pay attention to the clerks listing to identify, uh, the new meetings for the new dates. Um, and with that, I didn't talk about this with you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there anything you would offer? Okay, all right. So, um, are we ba, we're not bound to accept an oral commentary, are we? Okay, moving on. The next item is, um, Discuss, adopt, revise, or defer creating, conferring, and appointing the authority, the appoint members of the Citizens Advisory Board. You might remember at the last meeting, uh, Chairperson Chris Steele, uh, gave the report that they are back down to five members. Uh, that body mirrors ours in composition. It's a total of nine members. Um, I talked last meeting about the importance of having nominees for members of the Citizens Advisory Board and none were made, um, to me. It is by our indenture document, all nominees to the Citizens Advisory Board must be voted on, simple majority, and approved by the full trust. Um, I believe the Citizens Advisory Board exists for a good reason. And if it is going to continue to be in existence, we should make sure they are equipped, uh, to do their work. Um, so I have placed an agenda item on the agenda to, um, I have placed an item on the agenda to allow for the chair and vice chair to, uh, move forward with appointments as they present themselves with ratification, uh, by the full trust, um, after the, after that appointment has been made. Of course, that presents the circumstance where somebody could be disapproved by the full trust. I understand the risk there. Uh, but I think it important that we, uh, equip this body to do its work. So, um, that is an item. Um, I am asking for the pleasure of, of the full trust. It would require a motion. If there is disagreement with that approach, um, I lose no sleep over that. I'm just trying to help to find ways, uh, for that group to be active and equipped to do their work. So moved. There is a motion. Is there a second to that motion? It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Absent, this, did you get the names? Oh, um, who, who seconded?
I'll second.
There we go. All right. And we now have a motion and second. Do you have, uh, Pastor Scobie? He's trying.
Second.
All right. At this point, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By motion of six zero, the item passes. Agenda item number seven is a report regarding meetings of the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. Uh, because they are at five, there is no work that they have been able to report back to us. Um, so, uh, we will bypass agenda item number seven. Uh, before we go to agenda item number eight, I will, um, make the note that, uh, there are two items that have been requested for executive session consideration. Um, so following the announcement, if somebody would be kind enough to make the motion, um, to do that. Um, next regularly scheduled motion of the Criminal Justice Authority, it's listed here, uh, August the eleventh. I believe that date has been rescheduled. Is that correct? Uh, is, we have resurfaced that. So, uh, that is not the correct date. I believe the next date is the eighteenth. If you'll give me one second, I can verify that. Can somebody confirm that? Nikki, I believe you sent out the calendar invite. It's the eighteenth. Okay. So the next meeting will be a special meeting. It's on the eighteenth. The meeting on the eleventh is canceled. All right. At this point, I am ready to entertain a motion for recess for executive session.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for recess. Please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 We stand at recess.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
The motion to reconvene.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for a reconvening from executive session. Please call the row. Yes.
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 Okay, we will now look at agenda item number 12. Is there an action item coming from agenda item number 12? I motion to approve. Been a motion to approve the attached contract to agenda item number 12. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Sheriff Johnson, a second by Mr. Johnson. Call the row please. Yes.
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 Thank you, motion passes. Next is agenda item number 13. There is no official action to be taken other than I have asked trustees Griffin and Scobie to assist you Director Timmons in conversations with the Oklahoma City Police Department. As a reminder to members of the trust and the public, last year Oklahoma City Police Department accepted a contract based upon their volume. That was $1.3 million approximate in receivables by the detention center last year. We are not yet under contract for the current fiscal year, which started on July the first. So I appreciate Director Timmons bringing the contract to our attention and hope that trustees Scobie and Griffin can be of assistance to you in that process. With that, there is no further action. I will accept the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Please call the row. Yes.
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 We are adjourned.